All right. I'd like to call this December 5th, 2013 Cookville City Council Meeting to order. We have a roll call, please.
Councilman Anderson.
Present.
Councilman Woodford.
Present.
Mayor Swallows.
Here.
Vice Mayor Epps. Councilman Albrecht.
Here.
Four present, one absent.
Thank you. Would everyone please stand for a moment of silence followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you.
(inaudible) allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. We have additions or subtractions from the agenda?
Need to add three items. Item eight, consider approval to purchase 21 laptops and accessories, police department sponsor Randy Evans. Item nine, consider approval of inter-local agreement between the city of Cookville and Putnam County to place the Cookville-Putnam County Emergency Agency solely under the control of Putnam County, sponsors Jim Shipley. Item 10, consider resolution R 131211, repealing the joint resolution adopting the Putnam County Civil Defense Organization, sponsor Jim Shipley.
Thank you, Mr. Shipley. Have a motion to amend the agenda?
Some moved.
Second. I'll vote.
Four yes votes, motion carries.
Have a motion to approve the amended agenda.
Some moved.
Second.
Do we vote?
(laughing).
Four yes votes, motion carries.
That was a quick draw.
It went quick.
Sorry. All right. Consider approval amendments of council meeting held on November 21st, 2013. Have a motion for approval.
Some moved.
Second. I'll vote.
Four yes votes, motion carries.
Okay. On to new business. Hold a public hearing and consider on first reading ordinance 131118, rezoning 218 and 233 East 8th Street, 706, 720, 734, 824, 832, and 836, North Jefferson Avenue from RS-15, single-family residential to RS-10, which is also a single-family residential, sponsors Mr. James Mills.
Mayor, council members, this map depicts the location of these properties. This proposed rezoning was initiated by the owners of six of the eight properties in the area, including those at 218, 233 East 8th, and 720, 734, 832, and 836 North Jefferson Avenue. As you can see on the screen, these properties are located on the west side of North Jefferson Avenue between East 7th and East 9th Streets. Here's the current zoning. Generally, from East 6th Street north to East 9th Street, the east side of Jefferson Avenue is zoned as RS-10, and the west side is zoned as RS-15. The zoning configuration was based primarily on existing lot size characteristics, that being most of lots in those areas were zoned or had lot sizes of 15,000 square feet or more. The properties, as you can see, are contiguous with the UNV University zoning to the north and west, with RS-10 zoning to the east, and with RS-15 zoning to the south. The area is depicted in our future land use concept plan as being best suited for lower density residential development. Both these zoning districts fit within that classification identified in the land use plan. To give you a little history of this, at our May 2013 meeting of the planning commission, we received a request from Thomas Lynn to rezone his property, which is located at 218 East 8th Street from the RS-15 to RS-10, and that request was denied. Concerns expressed by the planning commission in May were potential spot zoning if Mr. Lynn's property was rezoned by itself, and there was also opposition from one property owner, contiguous property owner to the north. There was some consideration at that meeting about the inclusion of a larger area, but we had no specific request. He had indicated, Mr. Lynn did, that two of the three property owners located north of his property, those at 832 and 836 North Jefferson, were not opposed to the inclusion. But again, we had no specific request. The second request, or the request that was recommended by the planning commission, included three additional properties to the south of the Lynn property, so these three properties. And also, the two owners that he indicated in the May meeting that were in favor also had submitted official requests. That gave us six requests in this area. The owner of the property contiguous to the north, which was Nancy Pardue at 824 North Jefferson Avenue, continued to be opposed to the proposed rezoning, and although she didn't attend the planning commission meeting, she did submit a letter, which was distributed to the planning commission members indicating her opposition. The RS-15 and RS-10 districts are both primarily intended for single-family residential use. The basic difference between the two districts is lot size, which RS-15's 15,000 square feet, RS-10's 10,000 square feet. The district also differs in lot width requirements. In the RS-15, you must have a slightly wider lot at 100 feet, and in RS-10, you can go down to 75 feet. In looking at this area, the parcels located at 738, let me go on here. Here's an aerial view. I can come back to that. At least have the addresses on it to give you a better idea. And this map also depicts those that specifically requested. The parcels at 738, 824, 832, and 836 North Jefferson, and 233 East 8th, each have a land area of significantly less than 20,000 square feet, and if they were rezoned to RS-10, it could not be resubdivided. The property at 720 North Jefferson has a land area of over 20,000 and could potentially be subdivided. However, subdivision would require the approval of a variance for a flag lot. And the parcel located at 218 East 8th Street, which is the one owned by Lynn, consists of approximately 30,000 square feet and could potentially be subdivided into three lots instead of two lots if it was rezoned to RS-10. In studying this request, the planning department examined the possible inclusion of an eighth lot, which is the lot at the corner of Salmon Street and Jefferson. Mr. Lynn had indicated that he had contacted this property owner about inclusion, and they had, all they had indicated was they were not opposed, but did not want to be indicated as being specifically in favor. At least that's what he informed us. This property does consist of over 20,000 square feet, and if it was rezoned to RS-10, it could potentially be subdivided into two lots. If all eight parcels are rezoned or were rezoned to RS-10, then potentially what you'd be looking at would be an additional three lots, maximum. And that would include approving a flag lot subdivision of this tract, which that's unlikely with this house being where it's situated, an additional lot here, and the potential for this being subdivided into another lot. The planning commission recommended for the approval of rezoning from RS-15 to RS-10 all eight properties, and the planning department concurs with this recommendation.
Thank you, Mr. Mills. Have a motion for approval.
Some moved. We need to...
Second. Do you have any questions, comments from, yes ma'am?
I'm Nancy Pardue, and I'm sorry I was out of country the last time it came up, and I thought it was going to be city council, but when I got home, I found out it was a letter from the planning commission, that the planning commission had changed their vote. And this week, I went to see Mr. Mills, and he was in a business meeting, so I never got to talk to him. But I'm here tonight. I like Jack. I've talked to Jack many times. I have a problem that that lot was purchased knowing that it was two house lots. Jack came to me, he said, "We want to change the zoning. I want to take that house on 9th Street, that gray house on College Side, put it on the corner, put this house here, this house here. Here are the plans. I've got plans. I want to do this. This is what I want to do." And that was before it ever went to petition to change it, because he wanted the neighbors to sign off on it without coming to. And I wouldn't agree to it. And when I look at it, these two lots would be the same as the two houses there. I'm 70 years old. How many more years am I going to look at that lot? It's not going to make a whole lot of difference to my life. But my belief is, the zoning commission has zoned that, and it's on that side, and these are the rules and regulations for the Lynn Corporation to be able to make more money because of subdividing it into three. And Jack told me at one point, well, we've talked here four times, in that property, I need to sell it with three lots there, you know? That's what I need to do. I don't think that the planning commission should change the zoning for that reason. Then, when it didn't get approved, and Mr. Lynn tried to call it back, and it had to be voted on, and it was voted on, then they went to these other houses, and they know them. Nobody cares, you know? These two lots are that size, so who cares? The thing is, it's the principle of the thing. The lot was bought knowing that two houses could go on there. They bought it knowing they were going to come here and get three houses on that lot. It just shouldn't happen.
Thank you, Ms. Pardue.
He did submit, and I've got it on the screen here, a proposal for dividing the property. This is a potential layout if it was rezoned. Let me also point out that even if it is rezoned, he still has to meet all the requirements. That includes 10,000 per lot, 75, you know, I think it'd be unlikely there'd be any variances approved if it was to be rezoned. He did also submit to the planning commission site plan or schematics of how, what the buildings would look like. What's the word? I'm missing them. Anyway.
He showed me those plans long.
Well, I'm just showing you what he showed the planning commission. And this is what we looked at as the planning commission and the planning department as what he indicated would be built on the lots. And as we talked about at work session, we've got no control over the appearance of the structures that are built there.
Mr. Mills, has the lot been surveyed yet, as far as square footage?
I haven't seen a survey. He may have one.
Survey? I mean, okay, that's fine. I was just curious. Anyone else?
I do have a question. You had said that it could potentially be divided into three lots?
Yes, ma'am.
What would keep it from being able to be divided?
Well, if he hasn't surveyed, it has 29,000 square feet or less than 30,000 square feet, he won't have enough to do three lots. He must have a minimum of 30,000. Also, the lot dimensions would have to meet those specified by the subdivision regulation that includes the lot width requirement, which I talked about, which is 75 feet. You have to have a certain amount of frontage on each public street. There are also several other standards that have to be followed that would have to be
When I look at this, and I'm thinking about the property that is south of East 8th on Jefferson, and I believe that's 706 and 730 or 720.
720.
Yeah. And what I'm thinking is, those two houses are older homes, and by opening it up and allowing higher density there, you know, it makes me a little nervous to think about the changes to those older homes by putting up, you know, possibly more houses, like for instance, that 720, I mean 706, that's a pretty deep lot, as is 720. You know, that disturbs me also. And also, it disturbs me, and disturb is way too strong a word. It bothers me to think that when people purchase a property, knowing what it's zoned, that they knew when it was, when they purchased the property, and there was no contingency, you know, purchasing the property with the contingency that rezoning would happen, or something like that, you know? And quite frankly, where that's located, in the middle of town, you know, property in the middle of Cookville is desirable. People want to live in town and want to be able to move, you know, be, have ready access to where that is. So, and I've also had some calls from neighbors, not necessarily the ones just on that street, but across the street, I've had some phone calls having, you know, displeasure with this.
Well, one thing to note is that several lots in the immediate vicinity are at 10,000 square feet, so going to 10,000 within, you know, a few hundred feet is not really out of characteristic for the area, and that's another thing that we looked at, in that there are many, many lots over in here, especially right in here, that are 10,000 square feet or less. So it's really, we didn't think, out of characteristic. But you're right, it is slightly higher density than what could be done. Kurt, there now.
Yes, ma'am. Because I'm on the planning commission, I'm on record as having voted against this when we had it before the planning commission. I'm concerned about this request for rezoning, which was denied back in May by the planning commission for what was then considered a spot zone request. Since that denial, the property owner has lobbied with property owners in the neighborhood along Jefferson Avenue between 7th and 8th Street to be included in the rezoning request. Now, the original property owner plus the recruited property owners, this request is no longer a spot zone request. This is a well-established and older neighborhood adjoining the Tennessee Tech campus. It is unique in its charm and character. This is a very good example of why people are proud to live in Cookville. All rezoning requests are about financial gain or benefit. I have no problem with that, and real estate is always about location. I understand that also. What I worry about is that we could be setting a precedent that one property owner could change an established neighborhood. We have several areas in the city limits that do need much improvement, and I'm in favor of those who seek to improve individual properties or our whole neighborhoods. Most of the people in Cookville don't pay attention to what we do about zoning or rezoning requests until it hits their property line or their neighborhood. What about the person or persons who might object? Who listens to them? Who represents them? This isn't about big versus small or good versus bad. This is about a difference of opinion on the number of houses that could be built on this property. Mrs. Pardue is directly affected by this, and she feels that the two houses, that two houses on this property are enough, and the property owner knew the zoning restrictions when purchasing. I agree with her.
Thank you, Mr. Woodford. Anyone else? Yes, sir.
Jack Lynn, I'm the one that submitted all the requests, and with the six property owners that have also submitted their requests. I guess I would like to say that there's been a pretty big negative feeling put on this whole project, but there's a reason that so many neighbors are for it, and that's because it'd be a great thing for the area. And only a few of us in this room live in that area, and that's why they're for it, is because of shared the plan, and they all agree with it. And I would love for it to be a stop, a four-way stop, where people pull up and say, "This, you know, this looks great. Like, I would love to live in a place like this." If you go with this, my plan, you are guaranteed that. The two houses, you know, I can't just drop one of the house plans and build two of these houses. So that's why the neighbors are for it, is because I've assured them that it is going to look great, and that's what they'll get.
Thank you, Mr. Lynn. Well, I appreciate both of you coming, Ms. Pardue and Mr. Lynn. I've, as far as the rezoning after a purchase, that doesn't bother me at all. We approve RAO overlay districts and things like that every, you know, every meeting almost, or do a rezoning. So that doesn't bother me. The fact that it could potentially have three additional houses, I mean, three doesn't sound like a whole lot. Of course, one of the lots, I guess, would have to get a variance to even do that. So there's another hurdle there. But the fact that everything east, I guess that's east, of Jefferson is RS-10, and this makes it more contiguous, it makes sense to me. I mean, it does make sense to me to be RS-10. It's, and that six out of the eight property owners said that. So I mean, that's kind of the way I look at it. It's, it fits in the land use plan. It's contiguous with RS-10 zone. It does seem to stick out a little more as a spot zone on the RS-15 side of things. It looks a little like it doesn't belong in RS-15. So for those reasons, I'm not opposed to it, but I do appreciate you coming. Yes, ma'am, you're more than welcome to get up again.
Nancy Pardue again. The last time I was here, I brought up the point that this portion of North Jefferson, years ago, I've been here 27 years, that apartment house was already built when I came. So 30 years ago, that property owner, who was RS-15, requested to be university. As soon as they got the change for university, because they made a little clothing store in that house, from what I understand. The property owner built this four-unit apartment house because they could, because it was zoned university. You start changing this down here, and this property owner could come and say, "I want to be university, because, look, it touches this, I'm right here, why can't I be university? Like, that block is university." You're going to get more and more requests to change things.
Thank you, Ms. Pardue. Anything else? Any one else? All right. Call vote.
One yes vote, three no. Motion does not carry. Motion fails.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Mills? Item four. Set a date, January 2nd, 2014, for public hearing on ordinance 131219, rezoning 440 East Broad Street, located in the East Broad-Freeze Street Historic Overlay District from RS-10 to CL, local commercial. Request submitted by Lauren Shipikov on behalf of Robertson Partnership and sponsors Ms. Kathy McLean.
Set a date. The date will be January the 2nd, 2014, 5:30 PM.
Thank you. Do you have a motion for approval?
Some moved.
Second.
Three yes votes, one no, one absent. Motion carries. Albrecht.
You want to correct your vote?
Correct. Okay. Correct. It's four yes votes. Motion carries.
Okay.
That's okay.
I didn't see you push the button, but she registered.
Item five. Consider approval to purchase six motorcycle helmet communication systems and five motorcycle communication kits from the sole source provider, sponsors Chief Randy Evans from the police department.
Mayor and council, as I presented this to you in work session, just remind you that all these, both the next two items, this one and the next item, are both funded through grants provided by the Governor's Highway Safety Office. And both of these items are provided by sole source providers and manufacturers. The first one up there is, as the slide states, is motorcycle helmet communication systems. They are wireless systems that actually fit into the helmet and allow the rider of the motorcycle to communicate hands-free, and they can do, this specific one, which is provided by PvP Communications, allows them to simultaneously to communicate on a cellphone and their police radio at the same time. The total package per unit is about $1,880 apiece, and the total expenditure is $10,685. I'd recommend your approval.
Thank you, Chief Evans. Do you have a motion for approval?
Some moved.
Second. Questions, comments?
We always like to spend money that's given to us, for sure.
All right. I'll vote.
Four yes votes, motion carries.
Item six. Consider approval to purchase 11 Stalker radio units from another sole source provider, sponsors Chief Randy Evans.
These are radar units, Mr. Mayor and council. To answer your question, Councilman Wood, we do have 34 radar units in inventory.
Wow.
Need to be careful.
They don't even tell us where they are every time.
They're everywhere, so everybody needs to slow down.
Yeah.
The life cycle generally on a radar unit is about eight to 10 years. The units that we're actually going to be replacing are in the neighborhood of 13 years old on average. Again, these units are funded by GHSO grant, the provider, sole source provider and manufacturer's Applied Concepts. We want to purchase 11 units. Unit cost is, as you see up there, and the total expenditure is $20,619, and request your approval.
Chief Evans, do you have a motion for approval?
Got way too many numbers in there.
Some moved.
Second. Questions, comments?
The unit cost is all. Is 1,874.50, right?
Yeah.
Not one?
There's one, one too many ones.
One too many ones.
Just look at the total. All vote.
Four yes votes, motion carries.
All right. Item seven. Thank you, Chief Evans. Item seven. Consider appointment to the Sewer Regulations Appeals Board, sponsors Mr. Ronnie Kelly.
Mayor and council, John Weekly, a member of the Sewer Regulation Appeals Board, his term expires at the end of December, and the city council needs to appoint a new member to the board to fill that vacancy. Sewer Regulation Appeal Board is made up of five members, appointed to three-year terms, shall not serve more than a two full, three-year term without a one-year break. Board is set up to conduct hearings on appeals of decisions of the director and actions taken under and pursuant to the Sewer Use Ordinance. Current members on the board are Mr. Weekly, a field state and a local engineer, Gina Whitehead with Metcom, Dan Icke with Dixie Imperial Plating, and Dennis George at the Tennessee Tech Water Center. It's our recommendation that Bob Vick, he's a local engineer, be appointed to fill that slot. Mr. Vick has previously served on the board and would be willing to do so if so selected.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. Do you have a motion for approval?
Some moved.
Second. Questions, comments? Appreciate them willing to serve.
That's a tough one to serve on.
Yeah, it's a tough one.
How many times it may?
Zero.
All right. I'll vote.
Thank you.
Four yes votes, motion carries.
All right. Onto the additions. Item eight. Consider approval to purchase 21 laptops and accessories, sponsors Police Department Chief Randy Evans.
Mayor and council, as you know, we have probably about 70 or 80 laptops in inventory. All those are considered mobile data terminals, and all of those terminals have to meet CEGIS requirements, which puts security requirements on those to protect law enforcement information. As you may know, in April of next year, Microsoft, most of those are XP operating systems. In April of next year, Microsoft is no longer going to support that operating system. So there's a need to, of course, that will make those out of compliance, so there's a need to replace those. Next slide. All of these are going to be on statewide contract, and we want to purchase 21 Lenovo laptops at $588.37 for the total of $12,355.77. Of course, then the other is the automobile adapter, which allows the laptop to charge while in the vehicle. And then we also want to purchase five desktops at $817.02 for a total of $4,085.10. And the total expenditure is $18,073.41, and we're going to fund that. And the total expenditure is $18,073.41, and we're going to fund that out of our drug fund.
Out of, I'm sorry?
Out of the drug fund.
Drug fund, okay.
Yes. And I recommend your approval.
Thank you, Chief. Do you have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Questions, comments?
Get compliant.
Like to spend the drug fund money. All right, all vote.
Four yes votes. Motion carries.
Item nine. Consider approval of interlocal agreement between the City of Cookeville and Putnam County, place the Cookeville-Putnam County Emergency Agency solely under the control of Putnam County, sponsors City Manager Jim Shipley.
Mayor and council, this is an interlocal agreement requested by Putnam County. The, let me just call them civil defense right now. I think their name now is Emergency Management Agency or something, but they have been sort of a standalone department as a joint venture between the city and county. During this whole time they've been in existence, they were not eligible to participate in state retirement. And for years, Kim Blaylock and I have talked about some way to try to get them where they could get on state retirement. And Kim has now decided that the county will just take the civil defense employees and that agency under the umbrella of Putnam County, where they will become county employees and be eligible for retirement. And this agreement does change the name from Cookeville Putnam County EMA to Putnam County EMA. And it will be a division of Putnam County, and the city right now contributes $25,400 a year for the operations of that agency, and we will, under this agreement, continue to do that. And the agreement was at first for 30 years, and we reduced that to 25 because there is some question about whether or not the council can contract beyond 25 years. So, we just dropped it to 25 years. And I think that's all I've got on it. Yeah. And I would recommend approval.
Motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Questions, comments? Anytime we can streamline it, streamline government, that's a good thing, right?
Yes, it is.
All right. All vote.
Four yes votes. Motion carries.
All right, item 10. Consider Resolution R 131211 repealing the joint resolution adopting the Putnam County Civil Defense Organization. City Manager Jim Shipley.
This resolution does repeal the previous actions that were adopted in 1996 by both Putnam County and the City of Cookeville. Putnam County adopted in 1996 by resolution, and the City of Cookeville adopted by ordinance. This resolution will suffice as far as the county is concerned and the county commission, but we will have to, at our next meeting, repeal the ordinance that we passed in 1996 that established this agency as a joint venture. And I would recommend approval.
Motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Questions, comments? All vote.
Four yes votes. Motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Shipley. All right. This is part of the meeting. We'd like to open the floor to anyone that would like to come forward. Feel free, just state your name, and if you could keep it three minutes, that'd be great.
Yes, my name is Louis Tomaso. I was here at the last meeting regarding right-of-way widths of roads and other items, which I really didn't get any correct answers. I have one question now I'd like to ask. I would like to see Mr. Shipley, Mr. Swallows, Mr. Woodford, lived on a road that is 16 feet wide, which was passed by the city, okay? And all three of you have your cars parked on the road, and there's a fire at the end of the street. How are fire trucks supposed to get onto the property? This is a road that was just finished about two months ago, and it's 16 feet wide.
I don't know how to answer that because I don't park cars on the road. I live at the end of a dead-end street. You must not even know where I live.
No, I don't.
Which road?
How could you stand up there and say that?
Which road are you speaking of?
St. James Place, the final road that was just built. There's no turnaround for fire equipment. The road's only 16 feet wide, and I don't see how anybody could get fire equipment on that road.
I'm not sure where St. James Place road is.
Off South Wallen.
South Wallen.
And I think that's a little pushing at 16 feet wide.
Is that, is that in it?
St. James.
Is that in a subdivision?
No, it's the development.
So, it's townhomes that are built on South Wallen.
It's a private street. It does have a turnaround at the front for garbage trucks to turn around. It was approved by Public Works. It was approved by all applicable departments. It's wider than 16 feet. It's 20 feet.
No, I measured it 16, and there's no turnaround. There are just mailboxes up front.
Well, we'll have to take our tape measure out and check yours, but it's supposed to be 20 feet, was what it was required to be.
Okay.
But it's a private street. It's not a public street.
It's not city owned or maintained?
Nope. But that plan was approved by all applicable departments to meet code. But it was a private street. Private streets are allowed, provided they meet all street construction standards. So, it had to be a minimum of 20 feet in width to be approved.
Well, I just pray there's no fire on that street. The state fire marshal would get involved with this.
Thank you, Mr. Tomaso. Anyone else? All right, I'm going to share with you a letter we got from a gentleman up in Kentucky who drove through Cookeville, looks like beginning of fall, sometime in September. He sent this, he said, he was writing, he said, working on getting everything ready for his first broadcast of the year in Clay County, Tennessee football game. This guy lives in Kentucky. He had to go to a Verizon store in Livingston and then on to an AT&amp;T store in Cookeville, which was only about 45 minutes from Salina. He says, "I don't remember ever visiting Cookeville before, other than just passing through. It sits right on I-40, but I came in from the other side, and all of a sudden, the sights and sounds of the town immediately caught my attention. As I came into the downtown area, I noticed literally dozens of quaint little stores with attractive storefronts, lots of little cafes along the sidewalk, every parking spot filled, and people everywhere. The town seemed so alive. No empty buildings or boarded-up windows, instead charming canopies and awnings and decorative windows that enticed shoppers, street after street after street. Past every large chain restaurant imaginable, past every large department store, past car dealers, furniture stores, et cetera, et cetera, and they were all very, very busy. Construction was going on in every direction. Now, this was on a Thursday mid-afternoon, not a weekend. I was totally in awe of this town." As, he said, as he drove home, he said, "I will always remember Cookeville and will definitely visit there again. I drove home that day, think about their obvious success and prosperity." That was from a gentleman in Kentucky, sent that to us. Just thought I would share that with everybody.
It's nice to hear.
It is very nice.
Very nice to hear.
Anything else?
No, sir.
Just a couple of things.
Yes, ma'am.
T double S double A football tournament. If you like football, why go out and look at the high school football teams? Putnam County Library Friends Book Sale is tomorrow for members only from 4 to 6, and on Saturday, it's open to the public from 10 to 1. So, if you like to read, you can buy some really inexpensive books at the book sale, and it benefits the library.
I'm going to expand on what Councilman Albright said about the T double S double A Blue Cross Blue Shield Bowl. That is one of the bigger events we have in our area, and especially for the city of Cookeville. And the reason we have it is because a lot of volunteers are out there working right now in the rain and in the potential really, really cold weather. But the reason we have it and we've kept it is because of the people that work there, the volunteers, and the city, the way everybody comes together and supports that. So, with that being said, there is possibility of some bad weather, and I'm not asking too much, but I would like to ask everyone, if they can, to go out and check out a game, just in case the crowd isn't as large as we would like for it to be. If you have a few extra minutes or an hour or two, go see some high school football at its finest and just pick a team out to cheer for and show them.
Seven o'clock, y'all be reading.
What's that?
Tomorrow night at seven o'clock, Hope for Henry County.
Ms. Fowler is a Henry County native. She says they play tomorrow night at seven.
And I just, when I came in tonight, as I was coming down Mailer, the Cookeville Police, state trooper, and a sheriff's car vehicle were leading the football players in. And I'm proud to live in a city that will take the time to honor these young people who are dedicating themselves to this sport, and it just makes me proud. At first, I thought, oh, my gosh, there's something bad wrong. But then, when I saw what it was, I was very happy to pull over and watch them head towards the stadium.
That makes a big impact with the players, if they've gotten feedback. That's one of the things that they remember is the police escort.
Yeah, it's, this is something that those kids will remember for the rest of their life. It's something they'll never forget, and so if we can make it special for them, I think we should.
Yeah, I agree.
Anything else? This meeting's adjourned.